Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That's correct.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Ms. Myers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure that most of you have already heard that Facebook has announced expansion plans to the Papillion Data Center site. The facility will grow to 2.6 million square feet from their current 1 point million under construction. This is good news for Papillion, Sarpy County, and the greater Omaha area. Also, we've scheduled the Run, Hide, Fight training for city council members for August 17th, Tuesday, right after the city council meeting. It'll only last probably, it should last less than an hour. We will send you out an email to remind you of that training as well. Plans are already beginning for Papillion's 150th anniversary in 2020. Mayor Black, Tony, and I met with the Papillion Community Foundation and others to discuss possible events. If you have any ideas or want to be involved, please let me know. Also, wanted to give you an update on the sale of ground in the business park to Family ER. As you well know, we approved the purchase agreement several months ago, and that was contingent upon three additional agreements coming back to you for approval. Those agreements were a buyback agreement, an option agreement, and a construction agreement. We just about have all of those finalized, and we would expect to have those back to you for approval sometime in April. Now, that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clu. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven years, zero, and eight.
Motion passes. Next is item E1, Ordinance 1802. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R4 Multifamily Residential for the property legally described as Tax Lot 7A of Section 28 Township 14 North Range 12 East, together with Tax Lot 9A of Section 21 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of South 96th Street and Lincoln Road. The applicant is Jeff Elliott. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Proponents?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Jeff Elliott. Jeff Elliott is here tonight with Woodsonia. Also, the Iverson family, or some of the Iverson family is here as well, the property owners. Also, Doug Kellner of TD2, the consulting engineers on this particular project, is also here. And then Jerry Slusky is also here, who is one of the developers of the multifamily project, and he'll be giving a presentation on that portion of the project. So I just wanted to start out, as you said, it says on the northwest corner of 96th and Lincoln Road, which is right here, so this is the subject site. And as you can see, it's, the Papio Creek is to the north, it's undeveloped to the west, it's undeveloped to the south, and really undeveloped to the east at this point in time with your Papillion Landing Rec Center being located right here, as you all know. The rezoning that we're talking about first, and obviously there's a corresponding preliminary plat on tonight as well, which is item F1, I believe, I'll kind of maybe talk about them interchangeably a little bit, understanding that one will come later as far as the public hearing and vote. There we go. I'll even zoom that in a little bit. So what this rezoning will allow for is 105 single-family lots that you can see here generally in this location, and then one multifamily lot at the corner, the northwest corner of Lincoln and 96th Street. And then, of course, you have three outlots, which are A, B, and C here, and they're shown in the dark green. In the outlots, it's interesting to note that they fall in your flood fringe, and of the 81.7 acres, 26.51 acres of this entire development actually falls within the flood fringe and can't be developed. This is the maximum amount that we can fill currently in the flood fringe. So you've got about 32% of the entire development being unusable, or green space, however you want to look at it. Actually, we think the green space adds value, as we'll talk about here in a little bit. It is generally consistent with the future land use designation as low-density residential and medium-density residential housing, and that's primarily viewed as, I think Papillion has 12 units or less as low-density. In this particular case, when you take the entire 81.7 acres and you divide it by the total number of units with the apartments and as well as the single-family lots, you have a density of about five units per acre with this development, which is considered low-density. The lots outlined in orange, I hope they show up in orange, I'm not really sure what color that is, but they're supposed to be in orange. They are the custom lots, and they will have an average price of about $525,000 each. The lot size is 85 by 130. As far as those lots are concerned, the lots that are outlined in yellow, although it looks a little green here, will have an average price of $365,000, and those lot sizes are 76 feet in width and 130 feet in depth. And then the lot here outlined on the corner in green will be the multifamily residential component of the development. And then, of course, the outlots are the dark green shown here around the custom lots. One thing I wanted to touch upon, the staff report did mention that they wanted us to consider moving the multifamily housing project to the north instead of being here on the south corner of Lincoln Road and 96th Street, but it really didn't work for us. And the reason why it didn't work for us, we felt in order to get these custom lots and get the lots that would end up being the $525,000 houses, we needed to utilize this area because most of this area, as I talked about earlier, is unusable. And so we're able to lift these 41 lots up out of the flood fringe, and so every one of those lots is actually a walkout. And we think that the green space or the outlots that you have that will be a combination of kind of passive recreational use and/or detention basins actually improves the value of these $525,000 houses that will be located here. So it's actually an asset and important to the value of the custom homes. So that brings me to really the traffic and access, and I know this is kind of more of the preliminary plat items, but I think in order to understand the rezoning, we need to understand the plating portion of it as well. Cornhusker, which runs right through the middle of the, more on the north side, connects 96th Street up to the Dittis property to the west, which is currently undeveloped. It's currently called for a two-lane section with the opportunity to have a three-lane section in the future, so it'll be graded to three lanes, but two lanes will be constructed for now. There will also be improvements made to 96th Street. 96th Street, of course, is an arterial. There'll be a median cut at the Cornhusker Road location or intersection, and there'll be a dedicated left turn with 150-foot stacky lane that will go into Cornhusker to the north. And then, of course, will be a full movement intersection here with the traffic signal at such time that it's warranted, but currently it won't be warranted until the property to the west is developed, and probably even some of the property to the east if there's a development plan there. There's also, of course, the construction of the internal streets here within the single-family subdivision that will be constructed with this particular development. And I wanted to talk a little bit about access off of 96th Street. Of course, you have Cornhusker, so that will access these particular lots here. Then on 96th Street, there's also a ride-in, ride-out at this location, and that is Osprey Street, or called for to be Osprey Street. And then on Lincoln Road, there will be an access point or an internal local road of 99th Street. And it's important to note that none of the outlots or buildable lots will have any direct access onto 96th Street here, so except for Osprey and Cornhusker, there won't be any lots that will be able to access 96th Street. As far as the outlots, no buildable lots will have direct access onto Cornhusker Road either, so everything will come off of a circle or a street that you can see there. The only two outlots, I think, are outlots, A and B, will have access off of Cornhusker just for maintenance purposes and to access them generally because they have to have some access there. The access to the multifamily lot will be limited to the access off of 99th Street, and it's shown here, and then one other access point at this location off 97th Street on Osprey. So there's only two access points onto the local streets to access the multifamily housing project. Then I wanted to get to just some of the other improvements that this development will bring to this particular area. There's a 10-foot-wide trail that will be extended along Lincoln Road on the south side of the development. There's also a five-foot sidewalk that will have to be constructed along 96th Street, and then, of course, up along Cornhusker Road. There is also a 12-inch water main extension that you can see, it's in blue here, and it goes up Lincoln Road, traverses through the development, comes down Cornhusker, and then actually has to go all the way to Portal Road. And this is going to have to be done with any development that occurs here. And that particular cost alone on the water main extension is approximately $940,000, so it's a big expenditure, and it's the reason why we have kind of these different diverse housing opportunities here between the multifamily, the $365,000 average houses, and then, of course, the $525,000 average houses. There is also a 10-inch outfall sanitary sewer line that runs in this direction to the east. So there's just a number of public improvements that are required with this particular development, and of course, we talked about so much of the acreage not being usable because of the amount of flood plain, flood fringe that is here with this particular property. Then I was just going to get to the proposed conceptual elevations. These are actual Charleston homes. That's one of the developers that's looking at the $365,000 houses in that range. And so I mean, it's got a couple of examples or conceptual drawings of what, these are actually existing houses. And then I have some conceptual drawings of what we're kind of looking for on the custom home side, which are the $525,000 average homes. And so that's, these are obviously conceptual, but this is what we're anticipating. And with that, I guess I just did want to say, between the different components, between the multifamily housing, the $365,000 lots, and then the $525,000 lots, the total value of this development on this 87 acres is approximately $70 million upon full buildout, so it's not an insignificant amount from a tax-based perspective. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Slusky, and he's going to give you some input or information regarding the proposed apartment project, and then, of course, we're here for questions, entire development team. So with that...
Just hitting that one.
Just, you can go right down there.
Perfect. Thank you.
And then up and down if you want.
Appreciate it.
Welcome. Good evening. Jerry Slusky, a member of SB Communities. We are the developer of the multifamily, and we've had the pleasure of meeting with most of the council to explain this project. But I would like to point out a couple of things. First of all, your community has been identified as one that is in need of more multifamily. I've heard that that's not the most welcome product to come here, but I would like to tell you that we are specialists in bringing multifamily to communities of about your size. We started in 2012 after we had acquired a number of properties around the Omaha area, and we were asked to go out to Carney, Nebraska, to take a look at a development of 96 units that had been built out there. We went out there, we saw the units, we tried to acquire them, and one thing led to another, and the lady changed her mind. But what we learned out in Carney was that there was a tremendous need in the community, and some of the largest businesses there were looking for quality multifamily to bring to the community so their executives and hospital staff and others could have a nice apartment to stay in. And we then drove to Grand Island, and we saw the same thing. There had not been a huge number of apartments built in the last 20 years out there, and there were waiting lists for some of the older properties, and we met with some of the corporate executives out there at like Chief Industries and some of the other big employers, and they all told us the same thing. We need some quality rental product out here. We came back to Omaha, and we adopted that. SB adopted that as our strategy, and since that time, we have built 225 units in Grand Island and 225 units in two phases in Carney, both of those two phases. And they've been so well-received that we were essentially pre-leased in all the buildings before we had our certificates of occupancy. So the point is, we felt that we met the needs of those communities, and it matched up very well, and it's been very successful since that time. Our market study consultant, who we used also here in Papillion, I said to him, "Well, other than Des Moines, the Quant Cities, maybe Cedar Rapids in Iowa, is there a community there that would fit the same profile?" And he studied it, and I came back, and he said, "There's one city in Iowa that we recommend that you go to, and that is Ankeny, Iowa." Ankeny, as you may know, is 10 miles north of Des Moines, really a separate community in and of itself. It's crazy, but if you haven't seen this statistic, Iowa has one of the communities that is the, in the top 10 fastest-growing communities, not in Iowa, not in Nebraska, not in the Midwest, but in the entire country, and that is Ankeny, Iowa. They're doing something right there. They have the right schools, they have the right playgrounds, they have a huge park. There are a lot of our kids from all these communities around our area go to Ankeny for tournaments and stuff. And he said, "They need more apartments." So we went there, and we just completed last summer the first phase of a 300-unit project, and we had the same experience. They leased up before we had a certificate of occupancy. We're finishing out the project now, and another 90 units will come on this summer, and then another 90 units next summer. So when this was introduced to me about three months ago, I did the same thing that we did in Grand Island and Carney and Ankeny. We called up the same market study specialist, who is, he's truly the top three in the United States. The Selden Company uses him religiously, and that's who told me to use him, Ted Selden. We said, "Would you please study this market?" And he said, "Well, Jerry, I've already studied the Papillion market, and they are in need of apartments, but they're in need of them in certain places." Well, could you study, then, the places? And I said, "We have been suggested to go to this site. It has been suggested to us." And so we had him focus in, instead of doing a general overview of Papillion and its need for apartments, he focused in on this site. And I've shared with most of the council that this study came back extremely positive. He used the word "deep need" for residential product in Papillion. What does that mean? That means that for a bank or a developer, somebody who's going to put their name on the line, this site met all the criteria of a market study professional who does these studies all across the United States and certainly the Midwest to say, "This is a product, and this is a place that match up extremely well." So here we are. Our product is slightly different than just being an apartment product. We're more than that. We are three distinct kinds of rental product. We have conventional walk-up apartments like you see everywhere. That's about a third of our product. We have another third of our product, and that part of the product, if you could see the sign, are the bigger buildings along the south and the east side. Thank you, Larry. Yeah, and I, oh, okay, good. I am also technologically gifted, but it just takes me a while to get warmed up. Okay, so these are the buildings that are conventional apartments. They're very much like the Lux, which is a very fine product, just to the north of us, as you know. We've been cautioned to wait until the Lux filled up, and I understand they're filling up nicely, and that's because your need in Papillion is deep for multifamily. But we add something else to this. This building here is a 72-unit building, 36 units on each side, and in the middle here, it's like a hotel, we have a beautiful clubhouse. On the first floor is a great living room with a big screen TV, a bar, you can sit and watch, hang out with your friends, et cetera. On the second floor is a maximum workout facility, and on the third floor are meeting rooms. And so a person or a couple, be they 60, 70, or 25 or 26, can come to this building and come in here, and once they're inside, winter, summer, whatever, they've got the ability to go from one floor to the other, to go to their workout room, to go socialize with friends downstairs, and it's a self-contained product that is very attractive because the truth is, people don't like to walk steps anymore. And this elevator building takes away that problem. They can bring their mattresses and their furniture up, the elevators, and go down. They can go up and down the elevator to go to the workout facility, the meeting rooms, or the entertainment area. We will put in a first-class spa pool area. This won't be your normal pool. This will be decorated, this will have sounds, this will have cabanas, this will have lighting, this will have grills, fire pit, et cetera. This will be a first-class outdoor facility for people that really want to enjoy the amenities of this place. Lastly, the third product we offer are these. Let's see if I can move on here just a little bit. How am I doing, Larry? Help me. I screwed it up, didn't I? That's backward.
Here's the pool.
Yep. What'd you hit there? This one?
Yep.
Right there?
Yep.
Okay, so up here, these are townhomes, two-story. They're not apartments. These are homes, but they happen to be rental homes, and they rent for slightly higher, but you can pull in, each one has their own garage, and either you walk directly into your unit or take a set of steps up. They're very nice and very well. This is the backside of one of those, the front side of a 30plex. This is a 72plex. This is the actual picture from Ankeny. I know there were some concerns about the look from the streets. Totally agree with that. We use brick halfway up. We use hardy board siding the rest of the way up, and we use tremendously high-cost, high-quality roofing materials. We use heat pumps. Our interiors, I don't know if we included that, the look. There you go. These are really nice. That is quartz countertop. The, we use the wood vinyl in the, or tile in the kitchens with carpeting in the living areas. Another look at the quartz, we use Center Island kitchens, stainless steel appliances. Here's a look at our workout room, the pool. We do allow dogs. Is that it?
No, yeah.
That's it. We would appreciate your support. We want to bring a very fine product to Papillion, and I think you'll, in two years or a year and a half when we get done, you'll say, "Wow, I'm glad we approved that." Thank you for your talk.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Anybody neutral? Close the public hearing. Next, and we'll make sure those comments do carry over to the next agenda item as well. Next is item E2, Ordinance 1803. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from LI Limited Industrial and GC General Commercial to LI Limited Industrial and GC General Commercial for the property legally described as Tax Lot 7 in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 35 Township 14 North Range 11 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, together with that part of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Subsection 35, together with that part of the northeast quarter of Section 34 Township 14 North Range 11 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, lying south and east of the I-80 right-of-way, generally located south of Highway 370 between I-80 and South 156th Street. The applicant is Dowd Grain Company Incorporated, Steel Ridge South. It's also a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Proponents?
Doug Kellner with TD2 here on behalf of the applicant. The rezoning request is, if you notice, it's asking for the same zoning that it already has. We're just rearranging the zoning. We are, Lot 1 is now going to be the GC, so we're just matching it over what the plat will be, and then the rest will be light industrial. I assume most of you know, it's not a very well-kept secret anyway, that the middle large lot, 16-acre lot, is going to be for Kenworth. They're getting ready to apply for a building permit here shortly. We also are aware that there's some concerns about the 150th, 370 interchange. We have been working with Sarpy County and the DOT on putting a traffic signal out there yet this year. The SID to the north is actually going to install that for the DOT as part of the cost sharing and everything. This project is also expected to cost share in some of, and again, we've had some meetings with the county, and that project is scheduled to be started in 2019 for the widening. It'll be a straightening that 150th out and then making it four-lane there at the access, so it should help improve traffic issues that are out there. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Resolution, R180042. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as Tax Lot 7A of Section 28 Township 14 North Range 12 East, together with Tax Lot 9A of Section 21 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of South 96th Street and Lincoln Road. The applicant is Jeff Elliott. It's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. We'll carry the comments from the related item over to this one as well. Proponents?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Larry Jovan, 11440 Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Also with me, of course, today is the Iverson family, as well as Doug Kellner of TD2, the consulting engineers, as well as Jeff Elliott, the applicant, and then Jerry Slusky, of course, for the apartments. I just wanted to point out a couple of things, and otherwise, I don't understand, everything carries over. Again, this preliminary plat will allow for this really diverse housing, but really high-end diverse housing. So, for example, if you, when I was talking to Jerry when we were presenting this to the various council members, we were talking about this proposed apartment project, each door is anticipated to cost about $115,000 a door, so multiply that by 316 units, you have about a $36 million project here, and so it's going to be very, very high-end. I think, you know, most times you see the units coming in at about $90,000, $95,000 a door, so the fact that these are $115,000 a door, that kind of shows you... a door, so the fact that these are $115,000 a door, that kind of shows you how high-end they are as well. And so, again, I just wanted to say, with that, and then with the lots that you have that are the custom lots at $525,000, and then the lots, of course, that have an average price of $365,000, you have a project here that's about, oh, actually, this is probably a little light because of the, it's really closer probably to an $80 million project here, and given the fact that a big portion of this area of the 81 acres is unusable, I think it's pretty amazing that we have this kind of project. I think it's a great addition to this part of Papillion. It serves a number of purposes. One is to extend the water line from Lincoln Road all the way to Portal Road, which is a very costly item, and then, of course, the trail system, and then the public improvements that will be able to be made with this particular development to 96th Street as well as to Lincoln Road. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions, as well as the rest of the development team.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R180042?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Second by Councilman Florence. Any council discussion? Mr. Ingberg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I do like the project, and I plan on supporting the project, the preliminary plat. However, there's always a however. I want to make some comments on the record about traffic because I want to give us the opportunity to continue to work on what my concern is with the traffic flow between now and the final plat. To give everybody time to work on it, we've had some time constraints, certainly. When I talk about concern for traffic, the right-in and right-out is proposed on 96th Street. Whether it stays or goes, I really don't have a preference for. But I would encourage the council, and I would encourage the developer, along with our planning director and anybody else that might be affected on the east side of 96th besides the city, to explore the possibility, put a full-motion intersection on 96th Street that would line up with a proposed road that would someday connect the community center, our community center, with 96th Street. It would roughly fall kind of between, I think, their developments called Franklin and Jackson Street, between those two roadways, this kind of net horizontal. I think we'd be awfully short-sighted, not only for present day, but for future city councils, if we don't put a full-motion intersection there, because it makes no sense to me not to have another way that's accessible from 96th Street to our community center, simply because as that develops and we start having softball tournaments and so forth, it generates traffic. Rather than dump it all onto Lincoln Road, where we have homeowners that use it and everything else, and apartment traffic we're now going to have, it makes more sense to have a full-access intersection on 96th Street so we can move traffic in and out of the community center at a different location. We have not just one or two on Lincoln Road, we now have one on another four-lane arterial-type street. So, I would encourage the council to support that idea, and certainly, there's time to work on it, and I'll let the professionals decide the best way to do it, but it's my intention, before I vote on the final plat, to see resolution to have a full-motion intersection at that location. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mumgarde?
Well, I've got to piggyback on what Councilmember Ingberg was saying, and I think he's entirely right when he's talking about where you make the access, where you connect Cornhusker Road to 96th Street. And I'll bring, yes, Mr. Jovan, I want you to talk about this. Mr. Ingberg is entirely correct that if we're going to have good long-term vision as to how we use the recreation center and that activity area that we're building, we're spending a lot of money on right now, we can't have that landlocked and inaccessible to 96th Street. That it makes no sense to have parking lots sitting over there full of cars that all have to go out onto Lincoln Road when you can sit there and see a major road, 96th Street, across the way. So, at some point in the future, we need to have access from our recreation center to 96th Street. My only concern is that nothing happens on the west side of the street there in this development that would keep us from having that access. Now, whether it's a full interchange or not, I'll leave it to the professionals to talk about what that should be, where that would be. I know you've drawn Cornhusker Road in there at a particular point. I don't see that it has to be there at that point. My point is simply, it has to line up with whatever we're going to do on the east side of 96th Street. Can you have a comment? Will that be, will that be done? Is that impossible? Are you telling us, no, you'll never do it?
If, maybe you can put the screen back up. I can kind of explain the difficulties or the challenges with doing something like that. I kind of zoomed out, so what you can see here is, this is your existing roadway systems. You've got Portal Road, of course, to the north, 96th coming down across the Papio Creek. And then, really, your main collector, if you will, is Cornhusker Road that makes, really, the connection to the west and beyond. And wherever that connection ends up being here, you still have a $2 million and a half to $2 million problem, and this is a levy here. So you have a big problem making that connection and that crossing over this part of the Papillion drainageway, and then you have the levy too. So I don't know that it would ever be financially feasible to do that, but looking at the road system, the way you have it now, you have Portal here, you come down 96th Street, you have your main collector, which serves all of Papillion West, of course, Cornhusker, and then it sort of has this terminus at 96th Street, and a really major expensive problem to get over here. Again, it could be a million and a half to $2 million. I don't know that anyone here on our side has put, you know, any numbers to that, but just an estimate, that's a big number. So then what you have here is a right-in, right-out at this location, that right-in, right-out at this location, plus the connection and not having any ability to access Lincoln or 96th Street from the multifamily. You know, you close that right-in, right-out somehow, and I think you end up shoving all this traffic into the neighborhood, which doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense, or you shove them out on one access point on to 99th Street and out onto Lincoln. I think this is probably the best thing to do, but here's what we talked about, I think, that could possibly be done, is between your Portal Road and kind of your midpoint where Cornhusker's being called for, maybe in order to serve this area here, maybe there could be another right-in, right-out that fits at this location that serves this particular property, and then still being able to have this right-in, right-out here, so really all of your access is much better served. But I think, if you looked into this, this is going to be a huge problem with this crossing. I think it's going to be cost prohibitive for someone to actually pay for that.
Oh, I understand the cost that I'm talking about on the east side of the road there. That's why, in the plans for the recreation area, we don't have a drive coming out there.
Right.
But that's, this is something that at least I've been talking about since the first time we talked about building the rec center there. You know, so that's why I'm very flexible with what we do on our side, and I think that there are various things you can do to reduce that cost, such as move our outlet further south than where you show Cornhusker Road at. And I don't, I'm not looking for commitments at this time.
Right. I mean, we're happy to address it. I think cost has to be, obviously, a big factor in this because at some point, you know, it tips everything over on all sides, including the city side.
I guess at this point, I'm just asking that, okay, before the final plat comes back, this is a question I think needs to be answered, and maybe the answer is that you swing Cornhusker Road further south, and it doesn't come out onto 96th Street where you showed it there, but it comes out further south so it can line up with something that we build at a lesser cost. I'm just pointing out that by the time we have final plat, that's an issue that I think has to be resolved. You know, I really like your development. I think you have good ideas, but I don't want your development to come in and then five, six, eight years from now, we can't bring in, we can't get traffic in and out of 96th Street because of what you've done on the west side. I'm just saying, we just got to look ahead to do that, so I'm encouraging staff to keep that in mind.
Mr. Ingberg?
Well, can I have one more question here? And just to clarify, on a different topic here, the staff report indicates some concerns about the fiscal analysis, and I couldn't quite understand. The fiscal analysis on both the zoning and the preliminary plat has some concerns, but the preliminary plat recommendation says that those concerns have been taken care of, and maybe Mr. Sturzmann can, you know, clarify for me, is that a concern or not?
I think those concerns were primarily, we were asking for some verification of the projected valuation of the homes, which the applicant has provided.
Well, in particular, your questions there about the debt ratio. There were some issues there about some factors, our general obligation debt, some factors that they were using on their debt ratio that you didn't typically include.
One of the, one of the key items on the debt ratio is the valuation, because that's one of the components, and that's the part that was validated.
I just need clarification. Do we need to be concerned about that at this time or not?
Mine, they've been resolved to our satisfaction at this point.
Thank you. That's all I need to know. Thank you very much.
And also, that'll all be, that all gets put in the subdivision agreement at the end of the process, so that's when we'll really zone in on those numbers.
Yeah, I really didn't see that that was an issue here on preliminary plat, but since it showed up both in the zoning and the preliminary plat, I just wanted to have some discussion on that.
Mr. Ingberg?
I just wanted to clarify, when I was talking about that full-motion intersection, I know Council Mumgarde was talking about maybe moving Cornhusker further south. What I was talking about, and again, I'll leave this up to Mark and the folks from this development to work out, what I was talking about is intersection, kind of splits the difference between where they have Cornhusker now and it right, turning right out. Something takes us a little more south, because if I remember correctly, when we talked about, and you've been at the forefront of this, being able to cross to 96th Street, it occurs to me that, we discussed it previously, if we're a little further south, the cost diminishes because we don't have as much drainage way to overcome. And whether, whatever it costs, that's something the city has to be concerned about, that's our concern, but I don't think you want to do anything less than a full-motion intersection. I'll say it again, because if not, we're saddling the city future land use in a landlocked situation that I don't think anybody wants. So, I'm going to vote for the preliminary plat, but I hope you guys just gotta work something out that would, you know, provide a solution that's okay for everybody to deal with.
Thank you very much. Any other council discussion? Mr. Florence?
So, Mr. Sturzmann, can you give us just your initial thought on this conversation when we have an intersection at Portal and now we're talking about, as Mr. Ingberg says, a full-motion intersection's somewhere not very far from there?
So, I'm going to see if I'm interpreting correctly the comments that have been presented. In order to provide an access from the community center to 96th Street, which, again, is a project that would happen sometime down the road in the future, and there are some engineering challenges to that, but that would need to be a full-access intersection versus, say, a right-in, right-out to be the most effective. And right now, the development on the west has one full-access on 96th Street with Cornhusker Road and a right-in, right-out between that full-access and Lincoln Road. So what I'm hearing is, can we look at that overall design to see if there's a way to not prevent or add extra cost to that potential access from 96th Street into the community center? So it's looking at either the alignment of Cornhusker Road and where that ties into 96th Street, or is there a way to look at that right-in, right-out and convert that to full-access that would be in alignment to the east of 96th Street and would be the future access into the community center? So it's just looking at the opportunities with that.
Okay. Okay, and so, I guess then I don't have a question so much as a comment, and I think forward-thinking is absolutely a good idea. I think there's a number of projects we've looked at over time. We say, gosh, we should have done something about this. I also think, as we look at this and we say, okay, now we have a project that we never envisioned, and because now the project exists, we can say, hey, let's take advantage of this to get this done. Maybe that's not a bad idea, but, you know, there's already infrastructure improvements being done, and I don't know if it makes sense to burden the project with that. I think it makes sense to look at it, see how it makes sense, see how it works into our future. But let's keep in mind, when we did the community center, this wasn't envisioned, and this project wasn't envisioned, and now we're creating new rules, I'm going to say. Not that that's a bad thing, I think that's the role of government. So I'm for approval of this. I'm also for exploring this, but I don't know where that exploration takes us, and I just want to be on the record for that.
Thank you very much. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
7800s.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F2, Resolution R180043, also a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as Tax Lot 7 in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 35 Township 14 North Range 11 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, together with part of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of said Section 35, together with that part of the northeast quarter of Section 34 Township 14 North Range 11 East of the 6 PM said Sarpy County, lying south and east of I-80 right-of-way, generally located south of Highway 370 between I-80 and South 156. The applicant is Dowd Grain Company, Inc., Steel Ridge South. Open the public hearing. Proponents?
Doug Kellner with TD2 here on behalf of the applicant. Be able to answer any questions?
Thank you, and we'll carry the previous comments over as well. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R180043?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Clube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any council discussion? Please vote.
7800s.
Motion passes. Item F3, Resolution R180047, a resolution to approve a filing extension until June 4th, 2018, for Prairie Queen final plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the northwest quarter, Section 30 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located near the intersection of South 132nd Street and Lincoln Road. The applicant is Jerry Reimer, Prairie Queen LLC. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180047? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Welcome.
Excuse me, my name's Laura Brink here on behalf of the applicant, Prairie Queen. My intent would be to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
7800s.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F4, Resolution R180048, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a Class I liquor license for M&amp;J Empire LLC, doing business as the Hop House Bar and Grill, 11425 South 72nd Street, Suite 101. The manager application for Jamal Harris. It's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Is the applicant here? Okay. Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180048? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Gaines. Any council discussion? Please vote. It's all the regular agenda items, no committees have met. Do we have any comments from the floor? No comments from the floor? Any council comments? Just a few updates from the last couple of weeks. Actually, we've had a pretty busy agenda. MP Dodge asked for an update on what was going on in Papillion, so I went out and visited with about 30 real estate agents there and gave them an update on the development that was occurring. If you're not aware, the state of Nebraska won a national award from Site Selection Magazine for the most projects, I think it was per capita in the United States. That was the second year in a row Nebraska was awarded, and Papillion was specifically mentioned in the article with Facebook and some of the industrial development, so... So, again, economic engine for the state of Nebraska, and it's recognized nationally, so busy, busy, busy place. I think the staff recognizes that it's busy too. So thank you, everybody, for, for what you do just day in and day out. Ms. Powers, Mr. Thompson, Ms. Myers, and myself has also met in regards to continued discussion of relinquishing Highway 85 from Washington Street. Does it make sense for us to have that relinquished and get rid of the state highway designation and just have Washington Street being a city street? So those conversations continue. Most of the discussion is around making sure we understand if there's any liability when that's removed, expenses the state might have that would revert to us, and how do we mitigate that? So, and part of that's in cooperation with LaVista as well, because they want it relinquished for their Streetscapes project, and then have that all work well together. So those conversations continue. Also presented to the Leadership Sarpy Group on the economic development that's occurring down here. Thanks for everybody that showed up to the PVFD, Inc. event, created the museum and got that original fire truck back. Again, as we grow and we have full-time career fire, that we don't forget the volunteerism and the history and the tradition, so that was a very nice event and project. Ms. Myers, Ms. Powers, and I also attended the presentation on P3 funding with the Wastewater Agency. P3 is the Public Private Partnerships for funding of projects, and with that wastewater project as large it is, is that probably will be a P3 project. So it's more of an educational meeting, but if you have any interest in that and want updates on that, let us know. And then we also met with the Sarpy County Economic Development's got a new business development manager, Josh Sharvat, and we met with him. He's going to be doing some business recruitment, but also business retention. They're going and visiting with like the large employers in Sarpy and Papillion, understanding what their needs are, and just make sure they're comfortable in staying here, and if they're expanding, that they expand here and not somewhere else. So that's a good relationship. Two reminders, the Saturday at 1:00 is the Easter egg hunt. It's always a great event and lots of kids, and we've had it in blizzards, we've had it in fair weather, and I think we've had it in a tornado, so that, that goes on no matter what. So come out Saturday at 1:00 PM and enjoy that. And then reminder, Thursday, the 29th at 5:00 PM is the Sarpy Chambers Grain Giveaway. And so if you want to attend that, let Ms. Myers or Ally know. I think that's all the major updates. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Mumgarth. Mr. Florence.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
We're adjourned.